It is 6:35 in Reed Field, Maine. Please stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Well, welcome everyone to our June 13th meeting of the Select Board. And I just want to point out that we got started a little late. We have some technical things happening here and I will be moderating the chat in our Zoom. So that was what we were doing to get ready, but enough of that. We start this evening with item 22129. We have five minutes for these meeting items, which are minutes from the last meetings of March 14th and May 16th. Are there any issues with those? And Carol, I am watching you as well, so thank you.
I have taken motion to approve the minutes from Monday, March 14th.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the minutes of March 14th and May 16th as submitted. Is there any further discussion? All in favor present? And Carol, thank you for indicating affirmative. Thank you. Our next item is item 22130, warrants 48 through 51. I believe these belong to Mr. Keegan.
It's myself.
Thank you, sir.
So warrants 48 and 49 to the sum of $76,226.57. There are three items of note I put down was our payment to the winter ambulance for $19,055, the grading of town roads, $3,465, and our annual road sweeping for $6,300.
I have one question. What was Ellis Construction for $6,300?
Sweeping.
Sweeping. That's correct. Yep. They've been doing it for us for several years now and did a really good job this year. We had a lot of sand, so.
Excellent. Is that 48? Would you like to do?
That's 48 and 49.
Okay.
Do we want to make a motion on those?
I would love that. Would you like to do that?
I would make a motion to approve warrants 48, 49, and the total amount of $76,226.57.
It's been moved and seconded. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Everyone who is present, please vote now. And Carol, I see you vote in the affirmative. Thank you. Next up.
Warrant 50 and 51 for a sum of $378,395.92. Items of note obviously with our last payment for the RSU 38 for the year for $288,602.91. The beach buoys and line update for the beach, that was $2,122.69. I just wanted to note the mainland development. We've spent 87.74% of that allocated budget and on this warrant it was $6,332.50. And then our big payment also was to Waste Management Services, $10,835. And I broke that down because I was interested in just the $2,124 in demolition costs. And how much of that do we give back in revenue from those costs?
Well, we look at that every six months to its year. I haven't looked recently. We do okay with demo. We have a pretty good collection system. I'd say it covers most of the cost. We can't always capture all of it and it's an imperfect system, but it does work well as far as
It's close.
getting general equity and it's certainly more cost effective and valuable than trying to put in scales, which has been suggested.
Yeah.
I think it's 90% or greater where we can look at the transfer station budget quarterly.
Yeah, great.
Carol, you have unmuted. Did you want to talk? Okay, gotcha.
I'm having trouble hearing. It's very faint. I was just sending a chat. So I'm sorry. I'm doing my best. I'm trying to call in and it said the meeting ID was invalid. So I can hear better on my phone, but you can go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yeah, we'll also make an effort to be a little bit louder for you. Thank you. Go ahead if you had other questions about that.
Yes, so that was some signage for general road signs, but the bulk of it was the replacement components for the central line crosswalk markers that actually have been doing better the last month or so. Since they've been reinstalled, they haven't been hit since. So I think we're doing better. People are a little bit more used to them. So that's what that expense was for in large part.
Excellent.
I would make a motion to approve warrants.
Thank you.
I would make a motion to approve warrants 50 and 51 in the total amount of $378,395.92.
Second.
It's been moved and double seconded to approve warrants 50 and 51. Is there any further discussion? Everyone who is present, please vote. Excellent. And Carol, I see you voting in the affirmative. Thank you very much. Our next item of business takes us to Select Board Communications. We have five minutes allotted for this and I would open it up to the Select Board.
I have somebody, something if nobody else can say.
Oh, go ahead, Carol. You can go first and then we'll have Ralph.
Ralph can go. Go ahead, Ralph.
No, please, Carol, you first.
Okay, I'd like to go back to our discussion and I believe there was maybe a vote on remote meetings versus in-person meetings and we are encouraging committees to meet in person unless there was, my memory serves me right, a health concern or travel. Right now I'm in Indiana, so that's why I'm zooming. It's an interesting night to be talking about not zooming. But it seems some of the committees are still like fully remote when maybe they could be in person and make the discussion and a more personal setting happen. It seems, I just was attending a planning board meeting the other night and absolutely every person in in the committee was zooming. And the rest of it was very ironic. The rest of us were in a very tiny room downstairs. So if the concern is COVID, they put us all like shoulder to shoulder in the meeting room downstairs. So I'd like to revisit that discussion and maybe more meaningfully encourage people to be in person instead of remote unless there's a really good reason to not do that. For Select Board, we're nicely spaced out. People can mask if they want. If there is a health concern, I totally understand that. But especially for Planning Board, people are sharing architectural drawings and all kinds of things that it's much easier if people are in person. So I'd just like to maybe go back to a discussion of that and encouraging committees more to be back in person.
Great. We can put that in the agenda. Perhaps revisit that. Are we wanting to speak about that now?
Best practice would be to put it on the future.
Yeah, we'll just put it. Thank you, Carol. What we'll do is we'll bring that up on a next agenda setting.
I appreciate that.
Talk about that. Yeah, absolutely. Sure. Anything else?
My turn.
Ralph, take it away.
Okay, first I want to make it very clear that what I have to say tonight reflect my positions, my views only. This, as most of you know, is my last meeting because I am not running again. And frankly, I'm not sure I could get re-elected to begin with. I don't know where the time has gone. Three years. And I guess the old adage is true that time flies when you're mostly having fun. I have some people I want to thank and some groups I want to thank and I have some specific comments about what's been going on in town for the last three years. I would start by thanking the voters for affording me the opportunity that I presently enjoy. It has been a privilege to serve and I hope I have lived up to your expectations. I just, it gets a little, it gets a little difficult here from time to time, but I also want to offer a modest tribute from my perspective to all the Reed Field Town employees who, to my mind, are administrative first responders. They fly below the radar for the most part. They're here every day and they handle the day-to-day administration of our town that keeps us running smoothly and out of the weeds, so to speak. I think I've had an opportunity to work with most of them at some point during the course of my three-year tenure and I have enjoyed every single experience. I I want to wish them all well. I certainly am grateful for what they do. They come to work every day with positive attitudes from my perspective and basically a fairly positive countenance, which is important when you're in the public service business. How the heck they do that, I have no idea on an ongoing basis. And if you've got the formula, could you please bottle it for me? Because as I think you all know by now, I'm in periodic need of therapy for attitude adjustment. I would also like to extend my heartfelt thanks to the Planning Board. I believe that they have performed with the ultimate fairness, judicious temperament and professional aplomb when it comes to dealing with what has been a contentious zoning issue that has been on their collective plates for the last three-plus years and maybe longer because I think this precedes my tenure on the board. Unfortunately, to my mind, the members of the committee have come in for what I consider to be unjustified criticism from quarters that I think, number one, do not understand the procedural practices that they have to go through and the regulations themselves. And then there's another sector that wants a certain outcome that the rules simply cannot accommodate. Protect all of us and in so doing and continuing that practice, they protect the rights of every single property owner in the town of Reed Field. Reed Field is not too far removed from a rather contentious, tempestuous time in its political history. From my observations, it seems that those scars are still readily evident and still very, very tender. We have an election coming up tomorrow. First, I would urge all registered voters to exercise their franchise. And secondly, I would respectfully request that they carefully consider their choices for the two open slots on the Select Board for the next go-round, if you will. Elections have consequences. We need to preserve and enhance the positive gains that the Select Boards of the past six years have made to surmount the difficulties from earlier times. There can be no backsliding on this if you want to continue the progress that has been made and you feel that progress has been made. To my fellow colleagues, past and present, I have certainly enjoyed the association. It's been a privilege. I suspect that I have taken more out of it than I have had. Time will tell. We have two issues on the ballot tomorrow. The broadband and recreation initiatives, broadband and park park and rec project. And if we are fortunate enough, I certainly did support them, as I believe all board members did. If we are fortunate enough to pass muster with the voters, the new board will have some heavy lifting to do. But I believe it's a task worth undertaking. And if you are successful, you will be responsible for enhancing the quality of life for virtually every resident in this town for the next couple of decades. I had a friend in a past life who told me at one point that public service, especially if you run for election, in small New England towns is akin to doing the Lord's work. I'm inclined to agree. I can't think of a hauler, a hire calling on this side of the grass, if I want to be honest about it. I certainly wish the new board all the best as they continue down that path in their public service careers. If you do well, we do well. If you succeed, we succeed. That's supposed to be what it's all about at the small town level. No pressure, just saying. Thanks to everyone for all the courtesies you have afforded me and I wish you all the best down the road.
Thank you very much, Ralph. We appreciate that and it has been, I speak for myself, but it's been a pleasure to serve on this list. We move on now to Town Staff Reports. We have ten minutes.
Dennis, I have one more thing. I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
It piggybacks on the last one. I should have done both at the same time. I have a resident, not a resident, but somebody that is asking for a meeting with the Select Board and the Town Manager. He's been working with the Planning Board since 2019. He's had seven meetings with the Planning Board and in that time has only met one Planning Board member in person. He's trying to move a small camp from 14-foot from the lake to 75 feet from the lake and he's at a major impasse. He keeps being asked to move his property back to an incline where the EPA has said that's not wise. So he's not sure where to turn. He's very frustrated and he's asking for a time to talk. And in that time, there have been like four properties in the last few years that have been granted the same exception that he's asking for. He's not a resident. He's been hoping to retire for the last two years and he would be a full-time resident because that's his wish, but he, the rules keep changing on him and he has multiple times rearranged his plan. He spent $16,000 in fees to get his plan reworked and he's just getting nowhere and getting very frustrated. So I'd like to see if there's any members of the Select Board would be interested in meeting with this gentleman is what he's asking for.
Quite sure if that's, I'm not quite sure that's how it works. The other thing is Eric, if they wanted to come in here and this gentleman wanted to speak to us during public comment, we would welcome that, but I would defer to Eric on this because it seems like, once again, we've run into some sort of procedural issue that perhaps is in fact a sort of bizarre thing. Eric, anything on this?
Well, I guess it would be appropriate for the resident or prospective resident to speak to the board directly. Not being a resident doesn't afford the exact same opportunity. But I think that might get us involved with planning board decisions.
There's nothing we can do, right? The Select Board has no control over that.
No, I mean, you might want to, you know, speak with me or ask me to speak with the code officer to clarify or see what the issue is to help.
And are you familiar with this particular situation?
I am and I don't want to comment on it because it's not really my place either.
Okay.
But I think that's a situation that is complicated.
Sure, seems that way.
I'm happy to work with Chip to try to move this, but I don't know if anything outside of working with the Planning Board is the right solution.
Okay, great.
Eric, if he's willing to sit with Eric and Chip, then maybe we can pursue that. He just is like trying to figure out how to do this. Thank you.
Happy to do that, Carol.
I want to echo your sentiments, Dennis, on this. The Select Board should have no active involvement in land use decision procedures.
Yeah, we won't.
It compromises the whole process. Eric is the front person. Our code enforcement officer is the person with whom this person should meet, those two, and then.
Go ahead, Catherine.
Well, I'm not going to speak with the eloquence or the length that Ralph did. But I am up for reelection and this could very well be my last Select Board meeting. And so I just want to take this opportunity to thank the people on the board, past and present. It's been a pleasure to serve the community. My wish would be to continue doing that, but if that's not the will of the people, so be it. And it's been a lot of fun.
Sounds good to me.
Thank you.
Now, barring any other distractions, we will go to Eric for the town.
Report. All right, I'll try to be quick on this. But I do, Catherine and Ralph, thank you both for your tremendous dedication, commitment and effort. Catherine has been helping me achieve more as a manager and helping our community achieve more by working with me, with boards and committees, just in a wonderfully generous fashion. And Ralph has done very much the same. Ralph was a big, huge help with the fire station project, having had some municipal building experience in the past. And he just came in ready to do his part for three years and I'm grateful for that, Ralph, and appreciate all the time we spent working.
My pleasure.
And Catherine, we'll see you at the end of the month, I hope. For the next select board meeting, but time will tell. That's not our decision. The, I'll start with the treasurer's report and note that this is for the month of May. Check reconciliation was completed for the month with no unusual or out of the ordinary activity. We are essentially complete with the audit. We will be discussing the short form audit briefly this evening, excuse me. And then we will be having a presentation from our auditors for the FY '21 fiscal year on the 27th. I had thought it might be July 18th, but it looks like it'll be the 27th. So that'll be good to get that wrapped up and we can move right into audit for the current fiscal year that's wrapping up at the end of this month. Fiscal year, end of year, we are preparing for that. June 30th is the end of the year. We have a number of adjustments to consider and also just general closeout activities. So Teresa and I are working on that, particularly Teresa. I did mention the period of the report. We have fewer journal entries than usual. I believe that's due in part to a combination of fewer deposits from online transactions as people slowly come back into the office after, you know, what was last spring, a very quiet time here. And also we've had fewer deposits. They've been consolidated in a few cases with staff vacations and things like that. Revenues and expenses should be at about 92% and we're not far off from that. Receipts are up for both the month and the year with year-to-date numbers looking consistent with expectations. Revenues are up almost 40% for the month due to the state revenue sharing. End up almost 11% for the year-to-date attributable to revenue sharing and other revenues. The revenue from late tax payments remains down and this is one that I love to see us lose money on month after month because it means people are paying their taxes fully and in some cases early. And that revenue is money I don't mind losing.
Just again, so say that one more time. It's because we're not, no late fees are be, we're having less late fees because the taxes are coming in on time.
Exactly. Yeah, that's exactly right. Expenses are up about 5.4% for the month due to monthly, mostly protection and roads and drainage, but down for the year mostly related to fewer capital expenses. As I've said many times, we're still trying to catch up after the two years of COVID, delayed some of our projects. Revenue relative to fund expended for, from most departments and divisions, they're on track. So things are looking very good relative to the budget as we come into the final month of the year and quarter. Nothing really stood out to me. We're doing pretty well with transfer station revenues after another, a good month, this past month. There was a question about demolition fees. We do see changes based on the season. In the springtime, we always have more demolition coming in that results in both more income and expense, but things are looking good in that department as well. So I'm happy to take any questions and then move on to my manager's report.
Questions? We are doing better than anticipated. Are we still going to need to take the full amount from both of those lines for budget purposes? And if so, is that simply because you want to walk away with a stronger fund balance at the end of the year, undesignated fund balance?
Yes, that's true, but also we are essentially obligated to move those funds as directed by the town meeting vote. So that's a big part of it. What's going to happen is that money will go into the into the general fund.
Right into the general fund?
Or in the case of the undesignated funds, will be used for either funding projects for the future or paying for planned expenditures. So both of those lines will be expanded. It's very much an actuarial type of accounting exercise, but in the end, what happens is all those extra revenues you're seeing will go back into either the general fund or the designated funds where those revenue surplus may exist. So it's the same net impact, but we're showing things in full detail by actually making that transaction as it was intended, rather than doing a net.
Yeah. Anything else? All right, what do we want here?
I will, um, let me get down here. All right, okay. So this is for my town manager's report for today's date, which covers mostly last month and a little bit of this month. We have hired a three-quarter time maintenance and transfer station employee. I want to welcome Chris Cassiani. We are interviewing summer beach attendants next week is what this report says, but we interviewed one today and we'll have one tomorrow. Both young kids and I expect we'll have two new beach attendants by the end of the week here. Congratulations to Angelica Pittman and Matt Seems for completing their six-month probationary period. Angelica is about a month out still, but she'd really have to screw up and change things. And so I'm ecstatic that she's on staff and she's just very close to wrapping up that period. So I wanted to make that point and just say thanks, Angelica, and thanks to Matt as well for both being just fantastic employees. We held a very productive employee meeting on May 19th. I want to thank all of our employees for their commitment and dedication to serving the community. As Ralph noted, it is not always Um we held a very productive employee meeting on May nineteenth. Um I want to thank all of our employees for their commitment and dedication to serving the community, uh as Ralph noted, is not always easy. Um the comp plan committee met last month to continue with the planned development process after a month's long break. Um that break was uh you know, condoned by the select board. We knew it was happening, or the board knew it was happening, uh and we were doing that in conjunction with KV cog as they reshuffled some staffing. Uh we are meeting again this week to get back on track uh and bucks, uh and I think we're we're heading in the right direction. Uh I am looking forward to scheduling our summer uh residence retreat uh meeting, excuse me, summer residence meeting and the annual chairs meeting and the select board planning retreat. Uh so these are things that um I wanted to just bring up. Um so the board knew and the public knew that they were coming. Um those are things that we would likely do uh at the meeting on the twenty seventh, uh but I wanted to just uh put those, put a flag on those. Uh the annual town meeting secret ballot vote is on. Okay.
Yes, we are.
We are recording. Uh and I want to st- thank the road committee for their diligent work uh to to move this forward uh through some tough times. The last couple of years have not been easy. Uh and I also want to mention to Dennis that Scott Horn is here from Horn Construction, so I would ask that we take that item out of order uh first chance we get.
I have no problem with that because we, as invigorating as these meetings can be, Mr. Horn, uh we don't. That sounds good, Eric.
Yes, uh maintenance and infrastructure. Um I want to cha- thank Chief Mank uh for his help in getting some uh better information about the uh sprinkler system at the uh transfer, excuse me, at the uh fire station. We will be required the more stringent NFPA standards, uh and that means that we will be uh updating bidders and re- restarting the RFP process with that higher uh level of 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 service requirement, which will come at a higher cost, unfortunately, but we're uh we have that question to answer and we're able to proceed. Uh we will be bringing cleaning services back in-house to minimize expenses uh and ending our service agreement with full stack and cleaning services. Uh they have performed fantastic work for several months, uh and I'm grateful to them. I want to thank them. Uh they were a tremendous help when we were short-staffed and uh and needed somebody to come in and help keep things uh clean, uh so thank you for that. Maintenance of the town cemeteries and properties is going well with the exception of the failure of the walker mower. And the exception of um staffing shortages at the transfer station, which has pulled maintenance staff away from other uh spring in, uh and so we can schedule uh and not have uh a a a clog of people early on uh like we used to have in Augusta. Uh we we've gotten past that. We want to keep it that way. Uh and um we will be discussing the renewal of our tipping and hauling agreement with waste management later on in the agenda. And so that is uh my town manager's report. Uh I do want to, if possible, um ask to make a few comments about some incidents that we had at the transfer station this past weekend and uh see if we can't um address that a little bit.
Please do and do me a favor, just make sure you're right in the microphone.
I will try to tilt it my direction. Just one second here and get to the select board folder.
While you do that, oh wow, that was.
All right, so um I'll just start by saying it gives me no pleasure to have to make these statements. About this time last year, I was having to defend town maintenance uh staff, transfer station staff and town volunteers uh from meritless attacks. Uh the planning board included uh by folks that just um were bent on on divisiveness and and hate, and um I we're here again. Uh I I think it's very unfortunate uh that over the past several weeks, the Reedfield transfer station uh operations have been repeatedly disrupted by Bob Bittar. Uh Bob has insisted upon walking through traffic, approaching vehicles uninvited, yelling and waving literature at people, distracting drivers, obstructing handicap parking spaces for hours, disregarding and threatening transfer station staff, but then to fire them. Just, I I'm I'm floored by this behavior and um I'll stay on script. Uh he's also been obstructing traffic uh with his vehicle and creating incredibly unsafe situations at the facility. The transfer station manager and tenants have repeatedly asked that he stop creating safety hazards with these antics. He has refused and instead has escalated his distracting behavior. Concerned residents and staff have had to call law enforcement on multiple occasions, not just once or twice, multiple occasions, to deal with these issues and to try to get some kind of intervention. Despite this unfortunate but necessary step, we had we were forced to close the transfer station for approximately thirty-five to forty-five minutes this Saturday to try to address the issues while law enforcement and town staff worked with Bob to try to get him off off the property and 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 out of the roadway. Bob partially blocked the busy North Road entrance both Saturday and Sunday for roughly an hour in order to force interactions with people coming to the transfer station. This generated multiple complaints and created completely unnecessary safety risks for residents of Reedfield, Fayette and Wayne, and people just passing through on North Road. The behavior is unacceptable, unlawful, disrespectful to everyone who uses the transfer station or pays taxes to support its operation. There is no excuse for such a shameful display of arrogance and a- at the expense of our staff and residents. His misguided protest is not more important important than their safety. Bob owes an apology to all of them for disruption that he has caused. And we have earnestly tried everything, short of arresting him, to try to resolve this issue, everything. But he's asked us to arrest him. He wants to be arrested. He wants to be a victim, and he wants to be able to make that claim and is trying to force the town into a lose-lose situation. It is irresponsible and just unacceptable. The town of Reedfield strongly supports free speech, and we have a policy in place and have had that policy in place for nearly three years that allows for a a safe space for potential uh candidates, political speech and other activities at the transfer station. That policy is, has been approved by the select board and the solid waste committee. It's supported by our solid waste and recycling ordinance. It's not ambiguous, uh and there is no suppression of free speech happening at the transfer station. That is a false issue and a false narrative. For nearly three years, other candidates have and uh petitioners have followed basic safety protocols and been successfully able to interact with residents on multiple occasions without intentionally disrupting transfer station activities. Uh I want to thank them above anything else for respecting their fellow citizens, and I want to again ask Bob to do the same. Uh I apologize if I'm uh you know, uh strongly um presenting this, but this is getting really old and it has to stop. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Um sure, Catherine has a question for you.
On a different topic, but thank you for addressing that. Um I was accosted personally in the middle of North Road on Sunday, maybe and on Saturday, and also got to meet with the sheriff when he arrived. Uh and that's a very uncomfortable situation for all people, and it puts a really bad face on Reedfield for the other towns coming here from Fayette and Wayne. Um and it it makes him very uncomfortable that this is the the uh group that they're involved with to get rid of their waste. So thank you for taking a stand, Eric. Anyway, my question was um concerning heat pumps. And when we had our public hearing a couple of weeks ago, um we had the windows open and the heat pumps on, and I'm just hoping that in the future, um we're going to be able to operate them in the efficient manner that they're they were intended for, which is how we're doing it tonight. The windows were closed, the heat pumps are on. That gives us the best airflow um and and keeps people safest in terms of COVID and just general health, so.
Absolutely agree. One correction, the heat pumps were actually off last time, and that was why we had that issue. Um I could not find the 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 remote control inside the cabinet. It's got a nice little holder that's stuck to the wall. So um that issue has been corrected, and I thank Bill for making sure these are on and working uh well for the meeting tonight.
Well, the lights were on and the vents were open during the meeting.
Uh it may have been that the the temperature was set too low or they were on hold, um but they were not functioning at that.
Well, that's very important, because that was the whole reason that the select board asked for them and approved paying for them, and we spent the ARCA funds to do that, so. Thank you.
Ralph? Why not?
It's working too well. I'm cold. I'm kidding. Suck it up, old man. Uh one more night.
Yeah.
Um going back to the comprehensive plan, is it your sense that the KV cog is now up to speed and will be able to deliver the services upon which we are so reliant to deliver the product? And then secondarily, uh the matter of the survey, I know you have a draft, which I think might be a little bit of overkill, but I think in my mind is still justifiable for an in-depth empirical look at what people want. How do you, A, KV cog, are they up to it? And B, what are your plans for only way? Doesn't seem to me like we would like to ask KV cog to develop that in-depth survey when I believe we already have one in hand.
Uh sure, so starting off with KV, uh quick, quick questions. Um we um we did meet with their new um planning uh professional they hired probably a month ago uh at the last meeting. Um she was brand new um and heard a lot of concerns and criticisms. Justifiably, so uh and she's been working diligently over the past month to help um get uh our our chapters back on track. KV cog uh is also hiring, I expect, within the next two weeks a new executive director. Um so they will be staffing up to actually meet the need. Uh I'm confident um that 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 we will get what we need from them. They have said that the work that that we've had to um duplicate to some extent, uh we will not be built for that work. Um and they will be fair uh going forward with any work that relates to uh the 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 pretty significant delays that we've had. Uh we do have until next June. Um that's when we anticipate we will be doing, taking a town meeting vote on the revised comp plan. Um the survey is going to be an integral part of that. Uh our approach currently is to develop actually two surveys, uh a short form and a long form. Uh the short form being available online and likely the the most um common uh form of of the paper form that we hand out. Um but we would like to have an in-depth survey that folks can take um, you know, online, recognizing that that might create a little bit of a skew in the results from for people that that are more able and willing to uh spend half an hour online filling out a survey, but in order to get that in-depth response, um we we would like to pursue the survey that way. Uh if someone wants to take that survey in paper form, we will make it available for them, but the idea is that we have two different angles, one being the the more robust in-depth uh and the other being the more uh traditional five-minute survey hitting on key points.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Anything else?
We want to skip now to the winter road.
Yes, let you want to do that now and then get to boards and things like that?
Sure.
Sure, all right. I would entertain a motion to move up uh our uh item twenty.
I'll make a motion to move item twenty-two one thirty-eight to right now.
Yes, indeed. It's been moved and second it, all in favor? All right. Uh we would do, uh we now are come to item twenty-two one thirty-eight, consider a winter road maintenance contract with Horn Construction. We have ten minutes set aside for this. Eric, you can have it, and Mr. Horn, if you don't mind, we're going to ask you to go to the podium, speak right into the microphone, so all those folks at home can hear you.
All right, so I'll start briefly and say that um we um had conducted a a RFP process for uh the winter roads contract. Uh we had uh four prospective bidders attend the pre-bid meeting. When the time came for bids to be due, we received zero bids. Uh so after consulting with the road committee, I reached out to all and the select board, I reached out to all four uh of the prospective bidders and asked if they would have any interest in working with us to negotiate uh a contract. Of those four bidders, uh only Horn Construction expressed a willingness uh to do that, and so we proceeded to work uh with Scott to develop a proposal that mimics the original RFP. So we didn't do a side deal. We didn't do anything different than what was presented right uh to all the the bidders from the very beginning. So I wanted to make that point very clear that this has been above board, um and we gave everybody an opportunity to participate. And the the results that you have in your packet are um what was presented by Scott, uh what um and what was um in essence approved by the by the road committee. Uh we had a road committee meeting last Thursday. Uh they reviewed the contract, uh felt comfortable with it with one uh one or two caveats, uh one caveat being that we would need to have uh some form of um GPS um uh data management and and vehicle monitoring uh to help with two things, uh fuel usage calculations in the event that we had a fuel escalator, which we are also looking to negotiate separately. Uh and to help um Scott with his fleet management uh information and help the town of Reedfield understanding better what um vehicles on the roads to provide a level of service that we're looking for. So um that was something that I that we discussed with the road committee, uh and I discussed with Scott last Friday. I apologize that I don't have a cost for that. Uh but um after, again, speaking with the road committee, um and speaking with Scott, I would like to um after your discussion, recommend that the select board approve the base contract that's in your packets, uh and also approve uh ongoing negotiation of a fuel escalator clause and um the the provisions for um the GPS tracking and.
And that's on page one fifty-two in the packet, I believe.
Yes, uh and I I I just want to thank Scott uh very much for his willingness to work with us. Uh we were in a bit of a bind, and it's been great. He's been uh the utmost professional, uh very honest, very straightforward, uh and he's actually provided more information than we've ever received with a proposal of this kind. Um and I think that's in part in response to the to the to the cost, uh but he's done a very good job of explaining to me and to the uh what the expenses are and why they're there, so.
Scott, you have that?
I will leave it and turn it over to Scott and the board.
Are there any questions that you have of us or anything of note that you would like to mention?
No, um it's pretty cut and dry. We've been here before. Uh the only thing that we've got to work out is something with the fuel case.
Yes, sure.
The fuel goes out of sight.
Yeah.
Rather than that.
Well, we appreciate you.
You can ask me any questions you'd like to.
All right. Anybody have, yeah, go ahead, Ralph.
Budget-wise, I cannot recall, it's probably a factor of age, whether or not we have the fuel escalators and the add-ons you discussed in the budget, and if we don't, how will we cover them?
Yeah, so uh we um we have a cost in the budget that is probably about ninety-five percent of what we expect the the base contract to be. Uh we didn't have all the information about where we were going to land when we had to finalize the budget, and we knew we were in process. But we also had no idea uh in March or even April uh that we were going to be seeing forty percent, fifty percent increases in diesel fuel costs uh and and um drastic increases in inflation, so the the short answer is that those items are, the add-on items are not in there. However, as municipality, we are authorized by state statute to use reserves uh for those expenses if need be. We do have
Up to a percentage, right?
Um up up to what we need to do to keep people safe.
Okay.
Uh and um the select board uh has a couple of options there. The first uh bucket is always the operating reserve for the roads, which we do have a healthy balance in.
God bless those carry forwards.
But God bless the carry forwards, and we also have a um uh the option if we need to to um to look at other funding mechanisms.
Okay.
Short term in order to uh cover some of those costs, but I I don't believe um especially what we've been considering um that those numbers would exceed more than fifteen or twenty thousand dollars, uh even if we saw, you know, diesel fuel at, say, seven dollars a gallon, uh which God help us if we do.
So the the potential for overages is is manageable within our reserve?
Absolutely. Thank you.
What is the current price of diesel? Does anyone know?
Hands away you go. We went from five fifty to six fifty.
Do you have your own tanks?
We do have our own tanks, and we have a oil truck that will be on reserve full of fuel in case there's a shortage of fuel. Depending on.
But sometimes, sometimes uh the cost that private entrepreneurs pay for that diesel is more than if you actually drove your truck to the pump. Is that correct?
It's about the same.
About the same, okay. Okay. So you're not, you're not paying a premium for your reserve onsite?
No.
Okay.
I have a quick question.
Go ahead, Carol.
Sorry. Again, going with the budget, um, this proposal seems a bit steeper than Cushing. Is that right than the previous proposal or contract?
So I didn't quite get the.
Steeper than Cushing?
Oh, steep, steeper, yes. No, so we have seen, I guess what I will say is that the, we saw a pretty significant escalation with the one-year contract renewal that we did receive from Cushing. And, and this is another increase. I think proportionally, it's probably similar. And I, yeah, I'll, I'll stop there and say it's proportionally probably similar to what we saw last year from, from Cushing.
Okay. And then a shortfall in the budget, it will be covered, I'm sure, by other means. I, I am, you know, cognizant of the lack of, of people responding to this and this is where we are, but as far as the budget that was built in and approved for this year, we're all okay with that? I mean, it is what it is.
Yeah, no, we have, we have those reserves on hand for this very reason. And hopefully when we're budgeting next year, we will have a bit more stability and not see the, the, the dramatic escalation in cost that we've seen between when we basically finalized the budget and we're able to find finalize the contract negotiations.
Go ahead, Ralph.
One last question. Over the duration of this contract, is this something that you think you might come to the select board with to perhaps resurrect a municipal road group? Have we?
Oh geez, that's a loaded question. Well, you're really throwing them on the way up.
Have we, have we reached, have we reached that level yet? Well, Scott's safe for three years. He has contracts.
He has three plus one.
And, and the fact that, and the fact that perhaps we're looking at alternatives might help us.
What, what I will say and what Scott and I have talked about is the fact that, yeah, that, that's something that we, we ought to be considering. Scott recognizes, I think, that, that, that this is an expensive endeavor for the town of Reedfield to pursue in this way. I think he's happy to have the work. I don't want to put words in his mouth, but I think.
Well, he looks pretty happy to me.
I think he recognizes.
Until the snow starts falling.
Recognizes, yeah, recognizes that, that, that we're dealing with, with the tax base and that, that all of this comes from our residents. So I know he's cognizant of that and so am mine, so is the select board. So yes, I think absolutely we'll be looking at that as a possibility and discussing that in good faith as we get near the end of the contract.
Why not?
Want to go first?
I just wanted to thank the road committee and Scott for making a plan seeing as we had none prior to that. So thanks.
Yeah. Plan is good.
I agree with that. And so this is strictly budgetary. This is not personal. I believe this contract is almost a hundred thousand dollars more than what we paid last year.
That sounds right.
If we're going to be transparent to the voters, this is a, a huge increase in cost to the town. And there's nothing we can do about it because there's a shortage of people who want to do this work. Our old contractor doesn't want to be up all night on call twenty-four seven all through the winter months. You know, I bet there aren't many of us who would want to do that kind of work. There are supply shortages for these contractors as there are for everything else. And so we recognize that, but this is an enormous amount of money. And I would certainly encourage the next board to pursue all other alternatives to what Ralph was talking about, just to see, put the proposal out there, compare contracting to running your own department. Maybe it's easier to hire somebody year round who wants to work for the town than it is to find contractors. I know we had to really twist Scott's arm to put this deal together and we're very grateful that you did that. So that addresses what Carol had asked, but I'm going to go back to, I believe you told me it was five fifty to six dollars a gallon currently for diesel and this contract is at six dollars an hour. I mean, at six dollars a gallon. So essentially we're already there. I think the only.
I think we had a seven dollar. After seven dollars.
Right.
But yeah, we're almost there.
Well, if we're there now.
Yeah.
Prices are going up and we know that. All forecasts are that nothing is going to change in terms of energy production in this country, so it's just going to continue to rise. I think the only responsible thing for the board to do is to now allocate funds or a proposed increase and not just rely on hoping that it doesn't get there and, oh, we'll have reserves. We might need those reserves for other things. This is a reserve that we know we're going to be using. We know this price is going to go up. And I think it would be, the board to identify those funds now and set them aside, you know. It's, it's a lot of money. There's ninety thousand dollars in fuel costs at six dollars a gallon. So when it goes to seven and then to eight and higher, the town has to fork it over because Scott's going to be paying out and we have to pay him for that.
One thing that the town might consider regardless of which way it wants to go down the road is to purchase its own vaulted storage tank for the, for the transfer station, if that's a permissible use, depending on what DEEP has to say about that. So you can take advantage of pre-buys and have that stuff on hand. So if your vendor has a fuel escalator in place, it doesn't suit your needs, but you have reserves that you have purchased of over-the-road diesel, you can, you can put that fuel in the tank and mitigate cost. I think it's about time that the town maybe, not gasoline, but certainly diesel ought to have some level of diesel storage onsite to offset costs because it is a moving target as Scott has told us. And this might be self-defense because the tanks are not cost prohibitive and they're fairly easy to install and they last a long, long time because they're above ground and they don't require monitoring to the extent underground stuff does.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the winter road service contract for Horn Construction Company as presented and authorize the town manager to sign same and including the fuel amendment.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept this proposed contract pending the amendment for the fuel escalator. Is there any further discussion? Carol, you have anything right now?
Nope. Thank you.
Okay. Everyone who is present, all in favor? Good. Carol, I see you have voted in the affirmative. Thank you. Very well, Mr. Horn. As much as you may want to, we invite you to get out of.
Oh, stick around. Thank you, Scott. Good luck.
Thank you.
Very well. We remove ourselves back to our communications. We are at boards, committees, commissions and departments as well as board and committee minutes. Any comments about the submitted minutes that included minutes from the trails committee? We had from the library. We also had the comprehensive plan committee as well as the planning board broadband. Yeah, got them all. Excellent. Very well. Thank you very much for those submissions. We appreciate it. We move on now to public communications. I want to start online. If anyone has any public communications online, you can unmute now or we will go to anyone who is here in person. Seeing none online, if there's anyone who is present now would like to speak? Eric, come on up. You know the deal right there at the podium. Make sure you say your name. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. My name is Eric Johns. And I am also running for a select board seat. My question is where is the ambulance that was promised to the people of Reedfield that would be at our fire station? I've gone by several times, three, four times a week, couple of times a day. I don't see the ambulance out there. Fifty-two thousand dollars for any ambulance. When I call that ambulance, I have to pay that ambulance company my insurance and then I have to pay the rest. Are we paying this ambulance service fifty-two thousand dollars to be able to say we will come to your town? It's a lot of money. Where is it? And we have, we have to pay regardless. So are we paying for the privilege of them working in our town? Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Eric, you want to take this?
I'll just give a quick answer that Winthrop ambulance service has never promised an ambulance at our station. They had stationed it there. Before the pandemic, the pandemic has resulted in a shortage of staffing for them as well as concerns about the, the facility and wanting to avoid basically having risk factors beyond their own station. So they, they will, I, I believe, when they get back to full staffing and when they have a comfort level that, that they are willing to, to work with, consider putting an ambulance back at that station as a staging point. But no, they, our agreement with them, our contract with them does not require them to be physically at that station. It's just a benefit for us to have them staged there. I, I, I do hope they get back there soon because we've had, you know, and we continue to have incidents in town where we need those services. I agree that the, the price is, is high and has gone up. Again, though, and we've had this discussion before, there are very few options for ambulance services, the most costly of which likely would be trying to do it in-house. Working with Delta is another option, but they come from Augusta. So for the time being, the Winthrop ambulance service probably is the best that we have. However, we, Carol, my the main municipal association to try to find a broad-based solution to this because we are just one town. We can't do this heavy lifting by ourselves and it really is a regional and statewide issue. So I think that we are doing what we can to try to move that ball forward. First of all, by continuing our relationship with, with Winthrop and, and pushing them to do better, what we always do, but also by trying to improve the environment in which we're all living through some work with MMA. So, yeah.
Several months ago, when I brought this up to the board, I was told that the residents of Reedfield would have the ambulance in town. Where, where are we from that right now?
I, I don't know that. I have no idea.
The select board doesn't make any comments during candidate's night, just the candidates do. So.
Yeah, it, it maybe, I mean, perhaps, I, I don't know. I don't know what to tell you.
Mr. Dubinsky has been here twice, I believe, this spring talking to us about this. And I guess, Eric, there is, if people don't have any money to pay and they don't have any insurance, they still get ambulance service. Is that correct?
They do. And that's actually one reason why our premiums are going up is because there is an increase in non-pen. And so we have to share in that.
And so I, I believe what Mr. Dubinsky has explained to us when he's been here, I do have the name right.
Chief Dubinsky.
John Dubinsky. Is that the way they determine our charge is based on the calls that they get? And when there's a difference, that's what has to be made up by the town. And so otherwise they can't operate as a business. They can't operate at a deficit and provide services twenty-four seven. And so, yes, a lot of towns have gone to hire calls the same way. And we have not chosen to do that, but that when a call comes in and they provide services to someone for an accident, the person's insurance is charged for that call. Because, for instance, Manchester has this problem because they do a lot of calls on Route two oh two, which just happens to lie in there, but it's a state highway, but they're constantly out doing traffic control and responding. And so they have a tremendous amount of money spent on that that they can't absorb just by the residents of their town. And so that's just.
Well, I know going from house to house and talking to people about some of the problems and what they would like to see done. And this is a subject that was brought up many times after people had watched, I guess, the select board meet, not select board, but candidate's night. And there's a lot of people in town that are worrying about the summer. They want to know why we're spending so much money on an ambulance that is not here in town and that we have to pay for that ambulance if is needed. So I, I'd like the committee that's looking at it. Is it a committee?
Twenty-two, one thirty-one is to consider the reapportment, reappointment of a slate of volunteers to the following groups: age-friendly, appeals board, budget committee, Combe Sea Watershed District, Conservation Commission, Enterprise Committee, Library Board, Marana Cook Outlet Dam, Recreation Board, Trails Committee, and the Thirty Mile River Watershed Association. If, oh, and cemetery. Did I, I just did not read that. I apologize. Very well then. We would like to take these as a slate. And so what I would like to do is we have a, in our packets, a list. We will start and go in alphabetical order. We will begin with the age-friendly committee.
I think this is what you're asking for. I would make a motion to approve Margaret Edmondson to the age-friendly committee, Peter Bickerman to the appeals board, Andrew Tolman, and to the cemetery committee, Tom Maloki to the Combe Sea Watershed, Bruce Hunter, Greg Durgan, and Marty Hannish to the Conservation Commission, Jessica Gordon to the Enterprise Committee along with Steve Moncello, Jennifer Bonifon and Maureen Kinder to the Library Board of Trustees, William Buck to the Marana Cook Outlet Dam, Matthew LaJoy to the Record Committee, Holly Ramlo, Jack.
It's been, yes, it's been moved and seconded to approve this slate, Ralph.
These are all reappointments, correct?
Yes, reappointments, absolutely right. That's how we can do it like this. Exactly right. I have a question for discussion. How, is there a limit?
No limit.
Excellent. All right. Very well. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor who are present? Thank you very much. Carol, I see you have voted in the affirmative. Thank you. Very well. We move on to individual appointments.
Just one?
Excuse me. Our first resignation of the evening, twenty-two, one thirty-two, is to consider the resignation of Eric Falconer from the broadband internet committee.
I would make a motion to approve the resignation of Eric Falconer from the broadband internet committee.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the resignation of Eric Falconer from the broadband committee. Any further discussion? Everyone present, but in favor? Excellent. Carol, I see you vote the affirmative. Thank you very much. Our next appointment is a reappointment to the broadband internet committee as proposed. It is an ad hoc committee.
I have a problem with this.
Yes.
I sent an email. This select board approved that committee to no longer be ad hoc. They are a standing committee now. And so we can't really approve these people to an ad hoc committee because it doesn't exist.
Very well.
So what is the proper way to handle this?
I guess I didn't see that in the, in the agenda items to actually make that change. I saw an appointment for a one-year term. Maybe I missed something in the review.
In the boards, committees, and commissions document that we did, I was looking that up online. That's why I sent that email to you.
Okay. So that's why it wouldn't have. Okay, so that's why it wouldn't have been in the, in the agenda items for, or the, as an individual. So it was a change that was included in that document as opposed to an individual motion?
Exactly.
Okay, all right. That makes sense to me now.
Yeah. And in fact, I have the text right here. It says broadband committee, mission statement, authorization is Select Board-appointed, membership. The broadband committee is a six-member board. Each member is appointed to a three-year term. So that is, so that was part of the original packet of boards and committees that we approved. And therefore it supersedes and makes it a standing committee. Is that true? That's what we're saying.
That would be correct.
Thank you. Ralph, do you have a comment?
No, that was what I was going to say.
Thank you very much. So I would.
It's technically a standing committee.
Yes, sir. So what I might do is I might ask for this to be tabled until we can.
Our next meeting?
Yeah, until the next meeting.
And we could just ask those people if they want to reapply. And then as with all other committees, whatever positions aren't filled, that way it can be opened up.
Absolutely right. Any other, if that's the pleasure of the Select Board, good. We don't need a motion for that. We're just going to table it. Very good. The next item is for item, or twenty-two, one thirty-three, it's the reapportment, excuse me, the reapportment of the Comprehensive Plan Committee as proposed. This is an ad hoc committee. And these members are on page one nineteen in your packet. I would entertain a motion to accept this.
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve Alana Batchelder, Christopher Chaney, Matthew Nazar, David Trinell, Elaine Cates, Jessica Gordon, Jeffrey Carlson, Dennis Price, Greg Lineback, Henry Clausen, and Paula Clark. Any further discussion? All in favor present? Thank you very much. Carol, I see you in the affirmative. Thank you. Next up is consider the appointment of Matt Magnuson to the Recreation Board.
Motion to approve Matt Magnuson to a position on the Rec Board beginning to beginning tonight. Is that correct?
Yeah, we can, it would be through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. So I guess it would be, I would, I would say tonight. Yeah, that would be appropriate.
Okay, so from tonight through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the request or application for Matt Magnuson to be on the Recreation Board. Is there any further discussion?
If he is a first-time appointee, are we going to waive his need to be here?
That's a good question. I would defer.
You certainly could. He did speak at the public hearing that we had. So you are familiar with him. He was the gentleman that spoke about, I believe.
He is the warden of the main state prison.
Yes, yes, or something like that. So.
I make a motion to waive the requirement to appear.
Second.
Good. All in favor? Carol, do you mind waiving that requirement? Thank you. I see your affirmative. Therefore, we get back to our original vote, which is for Matt Magnuson to be appointed to the Recreation Board. All in favor? Thank you. Carol, I see you in the affirmative. Thank you very much. And thank you, Matt, for your volunteering to serve. Next up is the appointment of Greg Lineback to the Recreation Board. This is his, also a first-time appointment, but not the first time that Greg has served on a town board or committee. I would entertain a motion to accept this.
I make the motion, appoint Greg Lineback to the Rec Board effective this evening through June twenty twenty-four.
Thank you very much. It's been moved and seconded to accept this application for Greg Lineback for the Recreation Committee, Recreation Board. Is there any further discussion? Everyone. Yes, thank you, Greg. All in favor who are here? Excellent. And Carol, I see you in the affirmative. Thank you very much. Our last item, twenty-two, one thirty-seven, is to consider recommending. Hey, I just want to make sure you can hear me, Carol. I'm going to, for item, the MMA legislative thing, I am going to volunteer for that?
Recording in progress.
Okay, excellent. Carol, do you vote in the affirmative for me being the, thank you very much?
Sorry, I, I lost you. I just got you back. Of course, thank you.
No, I, I'm, I'm operating in two different Zooms right now. It's, it's a little bit like a surrealist experience. Two, one nineteen, discuss the upcoming Heritage Day celebration in August. I just, I can do that if you want me to do that right now. Carol, can you wave your hand if you can hear me? I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
August is a wonderful time. Not only did I get married to my wife in August, but it's also Heritage Days. The second weekend of August is Heritage Days. This year, that happens to fall on August twelfth and thirteen. We have had a series of meetings for things happening at Heritage Days, and I can give you a bit of a prelude to what we are looking at. The day starts off, excuse me, on Friday evening, there is, of course, the Historical Society's Wine and Cheese Social. This is a member drive. You can join the Historical Society that night. They have great things to see if you are a fan of Reed Field like myself. I am a member and I will be going to the wine and cheese party and trying to fight Jeannie Harris for the cheese. We have that on Friday evening. There's been talk of a possible fifties and sixties sock op social also. Catherine Landrum, who is a town resident, is working on that, but we did not get a chance to speak about it at our last meeting. On Saturday, the day begins with the breakfast at the Mason's, and they always do their breakfast to benefit the graduating class at the Miranda Cook Community High School. So that's a great way for you to support them. At nine o'clock, there are a couple of things happening downtown. There will be a book sale at the fire station library, and there'll also be a business open house in the front yard of Reed Field's latest B and B venture, which I believe is called the Iron Fence Inn and Bed and Breakfast. In addition, there will be a Historical Society history walk that begins at ten AM. And there will also be other activities around. The art gallery will be having some activities. And then we head up to the, this is exciting for me. The Reed Field Heritage Days Kickball Extravaganza is making a comeback. We watched the championship be fought for for the first couple of years. We bypassed it last year so that we could let the excitement grow, but the Rec Department has decided to take on and unleash the Reed Field World Championship of Kickball. We will have more information. It is open for adults, for children, for, for young people, all people. Senior, well, you know, if you can kick a ball, you can play in the Reed Field World Championship. It is an exciting thing. The winners get a cash prize. It's, you can get your team together. And we do follow the World Kickball Organization rules, and that is a real thing. That evening, we will have the fireworks. The fireworks will happen, and those usually happen around nine thirty. We encourage people to be safe if you park on seventeen. And if you can, get in your boat and get on Miranda Cook and watch it from there. There's no better view of them from there. I just want to say it now, nice and early, and then we can revisit it over and over and over again. But the beach will close around five PM on Saturday. It's because there is a giant load of explosives being made their way to the beach. And the company that does that requires us to clear the beach. So we'll have signs. We'll have information. Reed Field Heritage Days has its own Facebook page. You can check us out there. And we also linked from the Reed Field Facebook page, so there's plenty of ways to get to Reed Field Heritage Days. Again, this year, August twelve and thirteen.
Thank you.
Great job.
Man, that was a lot.
Take a breath.
I talked a lot. We move on to new business. We have already taken care of item twenty-two, one thirty-eight, so therefore we transition to item twenty-two, one thirty-nine, Consider a Solid Waste Tipping and Hauling Contract Renewal with Waste Management. Before we get into this, I would entertain a motion to extend our meeting.
We have exactly thirty minutes of material left, and we have thirty.
Nope, it was scheduled until eight.
Oh, well, in that case, I make a motion to extend the meeting until eight forty-five.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded to extend our meeting to eight forty-five. All in favor? Carol, thank you. Very well. Let's talk about waste management, Eric.
All right, thanks. And I don't, is Steve LaChappelle on the screen there?
Yeah.
Or not, not Steve, Pete.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, hi, Pete. Sorry, the, the names are quite small here. So thanks for coming. Pete LaChappelle is representing Waste Management and would be happy to answer any questions that the Board may have or the public. But I'll just start by saying thanks to Pete for being so willing to work with us as we navigate what is a challenging environment right now. We had originally received a proposal from Waste Management that the Board several months ago opted to not engage with because we were hoping to do an RFP. But in that time, we've seen dramatic changes in the environment for waste management and the overall economy at large. We've just spent a lot of time talking about diesel fuel for Winter Road Contract. And it's my belief that, given the environment that we're in currently, that the best approach for the town of Reed Field is to stay with what we know, stay with what's worked. We've had a great relationship with Waste Management over the past several years. And going out to bid would, would bring in a lot of uncertainty and probably a lot of price padding that, that we are not necessarily comfortable with. I certainly am not. Waste Management is a very large company. They know their expenses very well, and they have the capacity to be quite lean and efficient. And we've seen that in their pricing over the past contract term. And also, I believe with this contract that we're, that we're looking at tonight. So I introduce Pete. I also want to let you folks know that Karen Peterson is here from the transfer station, a transfer station manager. So if you have any questions of her, she's also available. So we, we have a contract that is for a term of five years and has built-in contract pricing escalators. This is different than what we've seen in the past. In the past, we've seen things based on Consumer Price Index for specific industry, particularly waste, waste management hauling. So this is a little bit of a different approach, but I think it gives us more certainty and, and waste management. But.
Does it include food and fuel, which are the volatiles that are traditionally excluded from the core rate?
Well, so, so we have fixed increases per this contract.
So they're not necessarily fully representative of the CPI. They're negotiated increases. On what we.
Because he's done all the math to understand what they need to look at for pricing.
What metric are you using?
Please speak in your mic. I know I'm a crazy person.
Dr.
I'm sure Pete would appreciate it.
What metric are you using if it's not really the CPI for the escalators in the out years of the contract?
Excuse me, are you addressing me, sir?
Yes, sir, I am.
Oh, okay, thank you. First off, I, I hope everyone can hear me. I'd like to thank, okay, thank you. I'd like to thank the Chair, members of the Board, the Town Manager for your time this evening. I appreciate being here. I also appreciate your service. I painfully am aware of it because as I'm a city councillor here in Rochester, New Hampshire, and don't hold it against me, but this is my nineteenth year, and next December, I'm done. But the, to your question about the escalation is, I looked at this a number of different ways. Quite honestly, I was a little surprised that I got this first-year number approved, considering everything that's going on in the industry. The first year is approximately about a five percent increase. I was able to leave out any type of fuel escalator. I did a fixed increase of six percent per year.
Is that good, Ralph?
It's good for me, but I'm done.
Thank you for that, Pete.
It wasn't nineteen years.
I know my son told me I need to get a life.
Yeah.
I have a question on the term. I, it's just, I'm just restating. So this is a five-year contract that can be renewed for an additional five years. Is that correct?
That is correct. Right now, we're currently at the end of our, well, one of our five-year agreements. In order for me to keep the numbers where I am, I needed to spread that out over a five-year span. But yes, the renewal at the end of the next five years would be mutually agreed upon. It's not one way. And contingent upon funds being passed at the annual town budget.
Right. And then my second question is for Karen Peterson, the transfer station manager. What is the responsiveness of Waste Management when you call for pickups?
Thank you, Karen.
Are you satisfied with that? And is it addressed to your satisfaction in this contract?
The responsiveness is, is, I mean, if we get in a, in a, end up with more materials than we anticipate, and I call Waste Management, they can in many cases be there that day and take care of things. Out of all the different vendors that we deal with, I, I would say they are amongst the most responsive and most professional. So I'm pleased to see that you're considering renewing the contract with them.
Well, that's.
Awesome. That's great news for you guys.
I'd entertain a motion.
Well, one more question about the minimum tonnage charge, which is capped at, at four tons. Maybe Karen is the person to ask about this. Traditionally, when we have a haul, are we at four tons or more? When, if ever, are we subjected to the minimum charge?
I don't, I don't recall that we have been.
Okay. Those cans are packed and they're four tons plus.
They are definitely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
I mean, obviously the tonnage varies depending on the material in there, but they're, they're up there.
Pete has something to say.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Please, sir.
Thank you. Yeah, the, the minimum tonnage is a corporate initiative that happened a few years back, well, many years now. But you average on your demo or bulky material, five point three two tons per load. So the doing, your staff there is doing an excellent job of loading that and making sure it's up and above that four, four-ton minimum.
Excellent. Pete, I want to ask you a question, and, and maybe it's a, maybe it's the opposite, but, you know, have, have you, is dealing with Reed Field, is that something that you, you know, is our, is the operation and things like that? Do you, are we good to deal with as well?
It's funny you mention that, Mr. Chair. I actually had a conversation with Matt Fullerton, who's my ops supervisor, supervisor in Norwich Walk. And he told me that, that no issues. It's a finely oiled machine. They call, we service nine times out of ten. It may be that same day. So it's a pleasure to work with the town. Unfortunately, with COVID, I try to get up there every year, at least to pop in. And I know I, I was there in, in what, September to visit with Eric because COVID is kind of, well, it's still here, but my company loosened restrictions. So I like to have that dialogue at least once a year, meeting in person. The last thing I want to do as your public sector representative is just see you once every five years when the contract's up for renewal. That's not good business practice. Well, it isn't, and I firmly believe that.
Yes, sir. I also just wanted, I, I sort of, that was a loaded question because I also want to take this moment to give the proper approbations to Karen. Because I feel like it is a well-oiled machine because of her work, because of her dedication and the team that she works with. So if there was ever a time I could just look at you right in the eye and say, thank you for everything that you've done in working and representing Reed Field, I am appreciative. Thank you very much.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract with Waste Management as presented and authorize the Town Manager to sign.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to authorize the Waste Management contract as submitted. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? And Carol, I see you have voted in the affirmative. Thank you very much. Mr. LaChappelle, you are free to go. Get. All right, we move now to item twenty-two, one forty. Consider the purchase of a replacement zero-turn mower. We have five minutes approached this. Eric, you want to explain?
Sure, I'll try to speak into the microphone as much.
I appreciate that. Everyone at home does.
Basically, this is, is Matt on, Matt seems on Zoom?
No, I do not see him.
Well, I will run through this very quickly. And so there are zero-turn mower. And so the zero-turn mower, the Walker, is from 2007, which, if you do the math, is many, many years ago. It is no longer on the top or even the down slope of the maintenance curve. We're at the point now where it would cost much more to continue to operate that piece of equipment than, than to purchase new. And so the recommendation of the main is that we move ahead and replace that piece of equipment. For the purchasing policy, I did ask for multiple quotes. They looked at a few different pieces of equipment, including different models, replacement of the existing walker, and also a John Deere that is very similar, almost identical to the one that we currently operate. For matters of cost and convenience and efficiency, moving forward with the, the John Deere model makes the most sense. It is the one that appears the most likely to, to be delivered within a reasonable timeframe. It is the lowest cost, and it would give us a lot of value in having interchangeable parts and one training required for, for the, for both pieces of equipment. So we could have some efficiency there. So that is the recommendation, as I said, from myself and from the maintenance staff. And we do have funds available, approximately $60,000 into our equipment reserve to, to purchase that zero-turn outright rather than doing a lease. For, I believe that the bottom line looks like it would be around, so where was it?
$9,188.97.
Yes, $9,188.97. And so that's the recommendation, and I'm happy to take any questions.
I'll make a motion.
I also have a question. So I'm just curious, when I, when I look up the Walker and with the quote they've given us, it has like 1,661 hours. When I look up that model, it's quoted for 2,000 to 2,500 hours average lifespan. I'm just thinking, if that still has 900 hours-ish left on it, is it worth getting rid of for $640? Are we really getting a lot of bang for a buck, or is this something we should have on hand for emergencies for these other projects that we're working on? You know, those types of pieces, because $640 now doesn't seem like a lot in the big scheme of this.
And I'm going to piggyback on that. One of the, my question would be, for example, as involved in heritage days and involved in things going on at the softball field. I feel like part of the maintenance of the field and the area where we have heritage stays at the beach would be greatly enhanced if there was a mower on site where we could have people come and use to keep some of the maintenance, if we're talking about maintenance issues. This is something I thought about for a while. This was in here, and I thought maybe, you know, I don't know about the trade-in, I don't know about all that, but it seems to me that, you know, I would be apt to go mow the ball field for Heritage Days, for example, if there was a mower available area with my own mower because I just wanted to get it done, and then the rest of the group was straight out. So I just want to bring that up now in terms of, yeah, is there a way we could do?
Catherine, pick up. So I see two problems. One is it's town-owned equipment being used by non-town employees, and I think there is a conflict there in terms of liability. And it seems to me that what Matt presented here is that there's a high maintenance cost to keeping this mower. So if it breaks down once and costs $600 to repair, so someone can use it once or twice, and it breaks down again, and it's another $200 or $300, we're really not ahead of the game.
Yeah, I.
I mean, I get the idea. I like the concept, but maybe Eric could address those.
The recommendation would be to take the trade-in money. If you have a clutch going on, I guess, the right-hand side of this unit, and it goes.
Oh, yeah, Walker mowers are ridiculous.
You are, you are in the hole.
Yeah.
Let's, let's take the money in the hand, one in the, one in the hand, push, take the money and, and, and be happy you got it because it sounds to me like this thing, for whatever reason, even though it may supposedly have had a few more hours left in it, it doesn't. And it's just a liability on wheels waiting to cost us money.
The Walker mowers, it's amazing how expensive they are. Eric, do you want to talk about some of these random things?
Yes, so I think that if there is the possibility of trying to keep that as a backup, the key thing is that we do need to have two good functioning zero turns to reliably provide services. And that's been part of the challenge that we've had over, honestly, over the past several years, is that the Walker has not been a reliable piece of equipment. And we've gotten to that point where partly staffing because of transfer station coverage, but also partly because we're down to one zero turn. And it's not practical to push mow our cemeteries, despite what I've heard from some people say. I just, you know, I can't imagine pushing mowing five acres of hilly grass. But anyway, it's a possibility, but we would have to invest a few thousand dollars at least to get the gearbox that, I mean, as noted, it's leaking internally in the engine someplace. So just getting that thing pulled apart. I think we're at that point where it's probably not worth it, and as Ralph said, we can take the money. We can try to sell it ourselves for parts and maybe make a little bit more money, but I think we're better off taking the trade-in and making sure we have a reliable fleet. And this, these John Deere models that we're working with are the smallest commercial with the, with the heavy frame. They're a really good match to the terrain and size of our cemeteries. So I think that we could try to do something different, but it might be, might not be the best investment.
I'm fine. Sean, you have anything?
Yeah, that's great. Thanks so much for sharing.
It makes sense, and you've explained it well. So then I just want to add one hypothetical, if I can. Let's say my friend Dennis Cost buys a lawnmower, and he decides to donate it to the town of Reed Field. Could then a rotating group of volunteers use that to mow the fields and things like that?
We could probably work something out. We'd probably have to have waivers and all that business. We, when we do our wood heat program, we're going to start back up at the transfer station, actually. When we do that, we have people sign a waiver that was actually modified from a parasailing. It's a similar level.
I did that, yes.
But in any event, we can have volunteers doing things that are a little bit risky, provided we have ample protection through.
Sure. Okay. I just want to make.
I'd prefer to have our staff do it because that's their job.
Amen. Thank you. You want to do this?
To authorize the town manager to purchase the John Deere mower as presented in the quote from United Ag and Turf.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the John Deere bid for the zero-turn mower. Any further discussion? Everyone who is present, very well. Carol, thank you very much. We see you have voted in the affirmative. We now move on to consider and resolve accepting the Kennebec County Hazard Mitigation Plan and the 2021 update. This looked like a great hazard mitigation plan, and the update is right on track. Anybody else feel the same way?
Yeah.
I do.
Sure do.
What else do we need to know with this?
It's a routine update, and Sean Goodwin from KCEMA has been very good in communicating these changes to us. And I think it would be a pretty straightforward approval, the resolution that's before the board.
Yeah, excellent.
I'll make a motion to authorize the select board to sign the resolution for Kennebec County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the update to the Hazard Mitigation Plan. Everyone who is present, all in favor? Thank you very much. Carol, I see you have voted in the affirmative. Excellent. We move now to our next item, 22142, Consider the FY21 Short Form Audit and Supplemental Audit Services. Eric?
All right, thanks. I'll move this fairly quickly because we will have a full presentation. Is that something?
Sorry. Yes, you go ahead, Eric.
But by the, a full presentation by the auditor on the 27th. So this just gives a snapshot. This is the information that was included in the town report. In essence, we're looking pretty good. We are managing our fund balances well. This does show a bit of a, of a, of a big drop, but that's in large part because we started the year with revenue that had already come in in the prior fiscal year, and FY fiscal year 2021 ended in June of 2021. And so from an accounting perspective, it looks as though we've depleted, made some, some pretty good withdrawals from our accounts. But that was offset in a prior fiscal year by, by the revenues from the bonds that made up that. A few things that I'd like to highlight, I did talk about the fund balances, our reserve accounts. I did include those in a separate attachment as an addendum to this packet. And I wanted to point that out specifically because in talking with the auditor, they would prefer that we have select board approval of those final balances. I will note that these, that this spreadsheet that was included on the, on the website does match the bottom line that's included in the short form audit. And what the auditor chose to show here was additions, deletions, and then reallocations. And some of these are happening based on articles at town meeting. Others were related to activity that actually happened in the accounts, and some of the reallocations were based on necessary balancing of accounts. So I'm happy to take any questions on that either now or later. But in essence, we got a good, clean report. We do have some things that is not a disagreement, but the way that Teresa and I do things is a little bit different than the way the current auditor would like to see them. And that's okay. That's expected. So another item that I did include with this is a request for some training so that we can be on the same page with our auditor as far as how particularly we look at the reserve balance management, but also some general budgeting practices. And again, this is not unexpected when you switch auditors. We were doing things the way that, that we had been with the prior auditor, that they were happy with. And new auditors have sometimes new expectations, and so we're trying to meet those by, by pursuing that training. So in essence, we're going to have a full report from the auditor on the 27th. I'm looking for a motion to approve that additional training, $1,000. That would be out of the administration budget. And then also looking for approval for the final reserve balances as presented in the short form and as detailed in the supplement that I provided.
One comment to start with. When we go to sign this agreement, we don't have a well road in Reed Field, and we're not in 04294. So I think he had some cut and paste errors.
Okay.
In our address, so we could fix that so that this isn't binding.
Yes, very, that's, that's, that's nice, right to me.
I'm appreciative of having something for the audit at this point in time. I also appreciate seeing the short form in addition to the larger printed long form.
Anything else?
Ralph wants to say something.
I'm not sure exactly what it is I want to say. I'm not comfortable with, with what they're telling us about fund balance transfers. Is this line-by-line shifting of funds to balance lines that they're not happy with as far as the fund balance is concerned?
In some cases, yes. So for example, last year, and the major consideration was the fire station project. So we had previously approved funds for the project. We had established those as reserves. We then, because we went into those cost issues, had to establish a general reserve for municipal building projects. When all of those expenses were by, by town meeting vote for $100,000, that needed to be transferred to then balance out and zero out those two accounts. It does still leave a $45,000 balance in that general building reserve.
Okay, so what they want us to do essentially is, is more timely reconciliation of expenses versus reserves?
Yes, or just an affirmation, yeah, just an affirmation that you guys are really okay with that despite the fact that we voted on that town meeting warrant and all that.
All right, so, so we've got to, we've got to reaffirm what the town meeting said we could do.
Yes, and again, it's, I think it's belt and suspenders, but they're looking for that to say, they want, they want to make sure you're aware of it.
It's, it's internal controls, which are very important, given the small staff we have with overlays in terms of who's responsibility kind of are co-mingled. So I don't have a problem with it. I just wanted to make sure I understood it. It's just going to mean another line, another item on your agenda at certain points in time when you have instances like the firehouse and the library running over for whatever reason.
Yep. All right.
I would make a motion to approve the training for carryforwards, reserves, budgeting, and posting for budgeted transfers as presented in the amount not to exceed $1,000 with the noted address changes made and authorize the town manager to sign.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, present? Thank you very much. Carol, you have voted in the affirmative. Thank you very much. Our next item is 22143.
One more, so also a motion to approve the, the schedule of reserve balances as presented in detail in summary.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the schedule of reserve balances as presented in the summary. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to do that. All in favor? Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much. Carol, thank you. You have voted in the affirmative. Now we move to item 22143, Consider Spirit of America Award Nominations. Everyone, we like to keep a little bit of a lid on this so that it is a surprise for the recipients. The select board has received the information about the nominees. And unless there's any discussion.
I would approve the nominations that we've received to date. I make a motion to do that.
I would second that motion.
Seconded and moved to accept the Spirit of America Award nominations. We will also announce these at Heritage Days.
Hopefully not in rain.
Not in the, oh, man, it was so rainy. All in favor? Thank you very much, Carol. And I see you have voted in the affirmative. Thank you very much, Carol. We appreciate that. If there is no other items for upcoming business meetings and future agenda items, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? And Carol, you have voted in the affirmative. Travel safely. Carol, thank you very much. Thank you to everyone who came tonight.
Hope it's not too hot out there.
Get out there and vote.